Good evening. Let's call to order this regular meeting of the Board of the Westminster Public School Board. Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chantu. Mr. Davidak.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Present.
Mr. Valenti.
Present.
Fantastic. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led from students from Scott Carpenter Middle School, as well as Hodgkins Elementary. Come on down. All the way down.
That's my new show.
There's a few more.
Yep. Both of them face the flag.
All of us.
Yeah. Sure. See all your faces.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Got some pins for you.
He's like trick or treating over there. One for you?
I know.
One for you?
So cute.
Two for me?
Just pass them all out, Dino. All right. Thank you. If you all want to go sit back down, thank you.
Or go home.
Thank you.
Or run while you can.
Thank you.
Run while you can.
He's pouring after this.
All right. Let's move on to item number two, Agenda Approval.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the proposed Agenda for the regular meeting dated October 16, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantu.
Yes.
Mr. Davidak.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic. We have one more set of minutes.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education approve the executive session and study session meeting minutes dated October 9, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantu.
Yes.
Mr. Davidak.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic. Moving on to item four, the Superintendent Report with Dr. Swanson.
Good evening, Board. I just have one topic really in my report tonight, but it's a very important one, and it's one we'll continue to discuss when we hit study session again this evening. You all have been very involved, and you shared your thoughts with the staff and with me at the last study session we had with regard to our concerns with the State Board of Education and proposed changes to the state accountability system. And tonight, I want to give you an update on the second meeting with a lot of my colleagues and Oliver's colleagues throughout the state today. We held it here and set the stage for the resolution I will be recommending to you to pass later on tonight. Though Westminster Public Schools sounded the alarm, please know this is not deja vu with a WPS versus a State Board showdown like last spring. This truly is about changes that will virtually affect every district in the state, and it's been gratifying to watch, I think, a brush fire start with certainly superintendents and other educational leaders, and it continues to grow. And I think we're going to continue to gain allies, because I know one of the folks in our meeting today was our Executive Director from the Colorado Association of School Executives case. And there is a Western Slope meeting Thursday and Friday with superintendents, and I'm sure a State Board member who has a constituency down there will also be present, and this is going to be the Executive Director's topic to talk about. I will say it's been gratifying to see everybody come together. We have people from affluent districts, people with high test scores. We have poorer districts with low test scores, and we also have those in the middle. So this is cutting across the fabric of metro Denver, rural Colorado, hopefully Western Slope, Northern Colorado, and certainly Colorado Springs and beyond. The accreditation system is already a complicated mess, but in short, the state is considering a plan that would, number one, change the cut scores used to determine school and district performance framework ratings. Once again, because they've done this, as you know, in the past. That was one of our arguments last spring. And two, change the formula by lowering the importance of growth scores. And anyone who is an educator knows you have to recognize students do not all start at the same starting point like they're running a race. Some start at the beginning, some start a little ahead, some start way behind, and you have to get growth before you can get achievement results. And I wish I had my buzzer that I used during the summit keynote, because this is a bad idea. The State Board is considering these changes with little, if any, input from superintendents and their staff, and with a complete failure to examine the unintended negative consequences that would come from such a decision. The proposed changes would bring more confusion to an already broken system that no one has any confidence in right now. Certainly in a competency-based system like ours, you don't get improved achievement without first tackling and emphasizing student growth, and so many of our kids don't start at the starting line. They start behind that for a variety of reasons. And we have rightly concluded that the first priority is to catch the students up and fill in their learning gaps, and from that growth comes achievement, and I believe mastery, before they move to the next level, and as an end result, a beneficial and thoughtful and meaningful education. We also discussed in these meetings, some State Board members do have different agendas. Some have an agenda to ignore reality and instead try to make a political case that public education is failing. And the truth is, of course, the exact opposite. And as I said, our point of view is certainly gaining traction. The leaders we had this morning, about a dozen districts and a couple of agencies, and I know some of my colleagues from the first meeting, and I also attended last week's State Board of Education meeting, and we're doing a lot of behind the scenes arm twisting to get in front of State Board members and to also put pressure with a large group and a large diverse set of school districts to understand the implications of what they're attempting to do. In the short term, we are asking them to essentially don't do any more harm and leave the system flawed as it is, at least steady for a minute, because we anticipate there will be lots of changes down the road as well. We need to have a lot of things vetted with people who are experts in this. The system we have right now went through tons of vetting and tons of input, and to start making changes to that without any kind of meaningful input is just a bad idea. So we also have a team right now helping us draft a letter explaining our position to the State Board of Education and superintendents and boards of education around the state hopefully will be signing on in support. And in the meantime, the first formal public stance in opposition to these changes will come tonight when you vote on the resolution. And the letter is actually being composed with the talking points from our resolution and put into letter format. We hope to have a clean copy of that by tomorrow at close of business, so we can get it into people's hands prior to the Western Slope Conference Thursday and Friday, also prior to a Northern Superintendent's meeting in Northern Colorado, and several other accountability meetings that are going to be going off. I know Oliver's attending some on Friday as well. So that's where it sits right now, and I just wanted you to be aware of that and the importance of the leadership you're taking. I did share a draft today with my colleagues. They were very thankful, because it does have included in it many salient points. In anticipation of your passing of this resolution, my plan is to then send that to Case and Casby tomorrow. Westminster is a big leader in this, but we also are not going to be the only face in this, and so we want to make sure that we're doing our part collaboratively with others from the side, and all of us have various assignments who are attached to this collaboration right now. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Board comments, questions for Dr. Swanson? All right. No comments. Let's move on to the Board of Education discussion. As you know, we had a board meeting last week. Anything new to add or discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say is I'd like to commend the district for its leadership and continuing to fight this battle. I know last year, when, over the past few years, when we were down in conversation with the State Board of Education, there were a lot of people who agreed with us but necessarily wouldn't stand with us, because they were afraid of the political ramifications. And the one thing, you know, I've learned, leadership, one, you've got to be courageous, but two, it's lonely. And now, we have that opportunity where we have the credibility to go down and take this to the State Board of Education and continue to fight that battle for all students of Colorado, not just WPS. So thank you for doing that.
We're not alone this time.
If you remember last week during our study session, I asked, why are we?
Thank you.
You know, why are we, Westminster Public Schools always the only one sticking our face into this? And you replied very quickly, because we're the leaders. And you know, you're right. And thank you for your leadership. Thank you for pulling the, you and your team's leadership and pulling the meeting together last week and then again today. And it's nice to see that you've raised the subject with all of the other school districts, and they also see the red flags go up. So thank you for that.
I also, Pamela, as I say, you and your team, thank you very much. The sad part of the whole thing is, our team should be teaching the kids. We should be doing that instead of fighting this battle constantly. And that is what's disturbing to me, is that we continue to fight this battle, where we should take that energy and put it toward educating our kids.
Agreed.
It is a huge distraction.
Well, I think it remains very obvious that the majority of the State Board of Education really has no idea what's going on under their noses. They rely solely on staff, and the women fancy of a couple of their board members with very sharp agendas. This is nothing new. You know, it's unfortunate that so much resources from our district and other districts have to be spent to fight this, but given the fact that there's over 900,000 students in the state of Colorado who are impacted by this, I think that's a worthy fight to take on.
Agreed.
And remember, those 900,000 kids are going to be voters one day. Most of them will.
On a lighter note, I also attended the Thrillin' Strings performance last night, and I have to say, it was just so well done. Our kids, and they're just so talented. What a great night. The place was full. It was interactive. It was just a wonderful, wonderful Monday night. And I would say I wished more people were there, but it was full. There couldn't have been any more seats. But job well done to Westminster High School team, the orchestra, and the students.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to audience comments. Veronica, do we have any comments?
We don't have any comments.
No comments. Let's move on to education reports with Dr. Oliver Grinnam, who is going to introduce Hodgkins Elementary.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, and Dr. Swanson. Tonight, we will hear from the fourth set of performance schools as we continue our series of school presentations regarding achievement results, improvement efforts, and goal commitments for the 2018-19 school year. In preparation for tonight's presentations, you've already received in your board packets an executive summary about each school that describes its progress and improvement initiatives, as well as data regarding student and staff demographics, along with achievement data. To begin, we will hear from Hodgkins Elementary School, led by Principal Amber Swakowsky, who is currently in her third year as principal. As you know, she served the district as a teacher-coach and assistant principal for about a decade prior to becoming principal. During last year's presentation with the Board, Principal Swakowsky shared that Hodgkins Elementary School became a green school for the first time, and she expressed concern about sustaining the performance. While Hodgkins Elementary School continues to be a green school, and tonight, Principal Swakowsky will share their achievement success story. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, and Dr. Swanson. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to acknowledge our new assistant principal, Ms. Lori Yulaberry, who's in the audience tonight. We're very excited to have her with us at Hodgkins, and I'm hoping that we're not scaring her away with all of our level pre-K through five antics, but we are very happy to have her with us. Last year, I spoke to you about our why. Why Westminster Public Schools and why Hodgkins. Tonight, I will be sharing with you in more depth what we are doing and how we plan to continue our student progress. About a year ago, we celebrated our first year as a performance school. At my last board presentation, I shared with you that our goal was to once again earn this rating in 2018. Well, we did it. To be more specific, our incredible student learners and amazingly talented staff did it. This picture was taken on our reveal day. Everyone was there to celebrate, from our classroom teachers to our interventionists, to our custodians, to our office staff. Everyone was there, because each of us owns a piece of this accomplishment. I have to tell you, that reveal day is by far one of my favorite days of the principalship. So needless to say, it's good to be green. As indicated here, we earned 54.6 points on the school performance framework, and notably, we received a rating of approaching for both academic achievement and growth. Our goal in 2019 is to earn meet for both of these areas. Along with continuing our solid growth, we also would like to see our achievement scores continue to rise. And similar to a long-distance runner, we plan to run past the finish line, which for us would be to earn a performance rating of distinguished or blue. As indicated on this report, we continue to see academic growth for our students. In English Language Arts, we are seeing the gray and the blue colors. In our math, we're not seeing as many of the gray and blue colors. However, we are seeing that light orange color, which means we're moving closer to the 50th percentile. Next, I'd like to highlight some of our successes from this growth data. This slide shows some of our disaggregated group data. Some of these subgroups are outperforming both the district and the state. For example, our female learners in English Language Arts are at a 56.5 percentile. This data also shows that we're holding steady at or above the 50th percentile. For example, in the area of math, for our non-free and reduced lunch students, we're at the 53rd percentile. Here you see a comparison slide of our performance compared to nearby schools outside of our district. It's important to note that these schools have similar demographics than ours, and we are still outperforming them. We have committed to the following numbers for CMAS in 2019. In English Language Arts, our mean scaled score will be 732.5 with a 55% growth goal. In math, our scaled score will be 727.3 with a 55% growth goal, and in science, 580 for our mean scaled score. We're confident that we can achieve these goals based on the plan that we have already put into action for this year. Now, I'd like to share with you our plan, but more specifically, our what, our how, and our why. Staff has been given this chart. It outlines what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it's going to get done. This chart is important, because we know the more solidified we are in our why, our what will have that much more impact. Based on our why, we have strategically chosen resources and methods that will support our students and their continued success. In competency-based implementation, at Hodgkins, we're going to double down on the Kagan structures. For us, that means shoulder coaching for all of our instructional staff. Shoulder coaching is when a peer comes into your classroom to observe you for about 15 minutes, and during this observation, your coach can give you real-time feedback, so you can turn around and implement that with your students, just in order to improve your instruction as far as efficiency is concerned and effectiveness. We've already seen the positive impact that the shoulder coaching can have on our instruction, and we've also seen the positive impact that the classroom engagement, the structures have on classroom engagement and community building. The second area of focus for us is to continue empowering our students to grow into competent and successful leaders. This picture was taken last month at the WPS Summit, where two of our student leaders represented the elementary level on the student discussion panel. After the panel, we were all together again for our session on incorporating student leadership into a competency-based system. This was an incredibly proud moment for us to see our leaders in such a large forum. They were poised, they were confident and humble, everything that makes a good leader, and all this at just 10 years old. In the area of professional development, we have two areas we're going to be focusing on this year. The first would be math, specifically taking a deep look into our math instructional block with specific focus on the efficiency and effectiveness of our guided math groups and centers. The second area is incorporating trauma-informed practices into the classroom. These strategies will help support our students in emotional regulation and perseverance through all challenging situations, whether academic or personal. We are also continuing our important work with engaging and incorporating families into our school community. Two exciting opportunities coming up for our families that we're really looking forward to is this week, we're actually set to begin our second cohort of parents being trained in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Families. And this spring, our first cohort of parents will participate in the Parent Academy for Student Success. So again, very excited about both of these opportunities, because they're just helping us to continue to strengthen our homeschool connection. And finally, in early childhood education, we're continuing training in the best research-based early literacy practices. Our primary staff is receiving training on the development of early literacy skills. This training is being provided by the district. And at the building level, we are all being trained on Streamline, which is a phonics instructional program. As a building, we are focusing on DIBELS for our data-wide cycles and using a data analysis protocol, which we are able to discuss student strengths and needs, identify possible interventions, and share lessons learned as a team. This is helping us to grow instructional capacity within the staff and adding more literacy tools to our toolbox. So in conclusion, as a staff, we are not looking backwards for long or staying put in one place. We are continuing the work, improving our craft, and keeping our eye on the end goal, which is success for all of our students, both personally and academically. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Board, questions, comments?
Just one thing I would like to say, Amber. I really appreciate everything you do. What I'm really impressed about is that you're homegrown, and that's, I think, important, and we continue to do that. And Pamela, I thank you for that, and I think it's great to have you in this position and know you since you've come from high school to here. So, but one question on your math. You're going to, you were saying you're going from a 44, you're, from 2019, you're going to 55?
Can we go back to the math scores? Because that was my, going to be my question too, so.
I saw you write it, that's why I said it.
Oh, so you're still in my commentary, got it.
I think it goes for, yeah, the next one.
Thank you.
Is it slide seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're going from, on math, I see you're going from 2018, 44%, and I think that's supposed to be 55?
Yeah. I'm not quite sure why that says that. Yeah, no, it's not, oh. For the growth goal. For the growth goal. Yes, so that's what we achieved last year.
Okay.
Those were our scores from last year. So we would be going to, from a 719.9 to a 727.3 for a mean scaled score. And so we were in the 44.5 percentile this year for growth goals, so our goal is to be in that 55 percentile. It's just unacceptable to not be there. It really is. And so that's why we're really doubling down with our math and trying to get down to the root cause of why are we not seeing that growth goal? Because like Dr. Swanson said, growth is always going to come before achievement, and so we've really looked deep into our math instruction and working with Mr. Art Drotar on just our instruction on a daily basis. But what we're doing, is it actually working? Are the students accountable? That's how we know we're going to move to the growth.
Can you go back to the, since we're talking math, go back to the slide with the blue and orange colors?
The growth.
The growth? Yeah, thank you. No, keep going. Specifically with the, there we go.
Slide four.
There we go. Sorry. We just went through this quickly. So do we, from last school year to this one, as it relates to math, did we drop in our math growth? Is that accurate?
Right. We did. We saw a bit of a dip in our growth, and again, looking at the data, it's always important to look at the cohorts of students as well.
Right.
And so there's always a backstory to what the students, that cohort of students brought. And so knowing what we know about those students, making sure that their classroom teachers this year are prepared, not only looking at their formative assessment data on a daily basis, but it also is important to look at the CMAS data and really using our tools, such as Alpine, to dig deep into which strand is their strength, which strand is the area of challenge for them, and then just prioritizing as far as whole group lessons are concerned and guided reading groups are concerned, because yes, we did take a dip.
When you, when you meet with the teachers to discuss this, is it one-on-one? Is it collectively as a group, all of the above?
That would be, that would be during PLCs. So that's a group. So that's a group where myself or Ms. Yulaberry is there, and we just help discuss. It is, it's two, it's twofold, right?
Right.
So we have to look at the whole group needs, but then again, we have to use our tools, such as Alpine, where we can dig deeper into what is this student's story, because that affects our instruction. So do we spend our time on an entire geometry unit that might take four to six weeks, or can we, you know, progress them through that unit a little bit quicker? Again, you have to dig deep. It has to be the whole group instruction, but also, our biggest bang for our buck is that individual instruction. And so that's a conversation that happens within the team.
When you say you meet in PLCs, can you give that acronym?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Professional learning communities.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm living in too many acronyms right now.
No, I know. Sorry about that.
Any other questions, comments?
Go ahead, Dino.
A couple. On this same mess of numbers, performance level. I go across here where it says at or above benchmark. In 16, we were at 61. 17, we were at 31. And 18, we're at 42.
A comparison slide of our performance compared to nearby schools outside of our district. It's important to note that these schools have similar demographics than two hours, and we are still outperforming them. We have committed to the following numbers for CMAS in 2019. In English Language Arts, our mean scaled score will be 732.5 with a 55% growth goal. In math, our scaled score will be 727.3 with a 55% growth goal. And in science, 580 for our mean scaled score. We're confident that we can achieve these goals based on the plan that we have already put into action for this year. Now I'd like to share with you our plan, but more specifically, our what, our how, and our why. Staff has been given this chart. It outlines what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it's going to get done. This chart is important because we know the more solidified we are in our why, our what will have that much more impact. Based on our why, we have strategically chosen resources and methods that will support our students in their continued success. In competency-based implementation at Hodgkins, we're going to double down on the Kagan structures. For us, that means shoulder coaching for all of our instructional staff. Shoulder coaching is when a peer comes into your classroom to observe you for about 15 minutes, and during this observation, your coach can give you real-time feedback. So you can turn around and implement that with your students just in order to improve your instruction as far as efficiency is concerned and effectiveness. We've already seen the positive impact that the shoulder coaching can have on our instruction, and we've also seen the positive impact that the classroom engagement, the structures have on classroom engagement and community building. The second area of focus for us is to continue empowering our students to grow into competent and successful leaders. This picture was taken last month at the WPS Summit, where two of our student leaders represented the elementary level on the Student Discussion Panel. After the panel, we were all together again for our session on incorporating student leadership into a competency-based system. This was an incredibly proud moment for us to see our leaders in such a large forum. They were poised, they were confident and humble, everything that makes a good leader, and all this at just 10 years old. In the area of professional development, we have two areas we're going to be focusing on this year. The first would be math, specifically taking a deep look into our math instructional block with specific focus on the efficiency and effectiveness of our guided math groups and centers. The second area is incorporating trauma-informed practices into the classroom. These strategies will help support our students in emotional regulation and perseverance through all challenging situations, whether academic or personal. We are also continuing our important work with engaging and incorporating families into our school community. Two exciting opportunities coming up for our families that we're really looking forward to is this week, we're actually set to begin our second cohort of parents being trained in the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Families. And this spring, our first cohort of parents will participate in the Parent Academy for Student Success. So again, very excited about both of these opportunities because they're just helping us to continue to strengthen our homeschool connection. And finally, in early childhood education, we're continuing training in the best research-based early literacy practices. Our primary staff is receiving training on the development of early literacy skills. This training is being provided by the district. And at the building level, we are all being trained on Streamline, which is a phonics instructional program. As a building, we are focusing on DIBELS for our data-wide cycles and using a data analysis protocol, which we are able to discuss student strengths and needs, identify possible interventions, and share lessons learned as a team. This is helping us to grow instructional capacity within the staff and adding more literacy tools to our toolbox. So in conclusion, as a staff, we are not looking backwards for long or staying put in one place. We are continuing the work, improving our craft, and keeping our eye on the end goal, which is success for all of our students, both personally and academically. I thank you for your time, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Board, questions, comments?
Just one thing I would like to say, Amber, I really appreciate everything you do. What I'm really impressed about is that you're homegrown, and that's, I think, important, and we continue to do that. And Pamela, I thank you for that, and I think it's great to have you in this position and know you since you've come from high school to here, so. But one question on your math. You're going to, you were saying you're going from a 44, you're, from 2019, you're going to 55?
Can we go back to the math scores? Because that was my, going to be my question too, so.
I saw you write it, that's why I said it, so.
Oh, so you're still in my commentary, got it.
I think it goes for, to, yeah, the next one.
Thank you.
Is it slide seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're going from, on math, I see you're going from 2018, 44%, and I think that's supposed to be 55?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure why that says that. Yeah, no, it's not, oh. For the growth goal, for the growth goal, yes. So that's what we achieved last year.
Okay.
Those were our scores from last year. So we would be going to, from a 719.9 to a 727.3 for a mean scaled score. And so we were in the 44.5 percentile this year for growth goals, so our goal is to be in that 55 percentile. It's just unacceptable to not be there. It really is. And so that's why we're really doubling down with our math and trying to get down to the root cause of why are we not seeing that growth goal? Because like Dr. Swanson said, growth is always going to come before achievement, and so we've really looked deep into our math instruction and working with Mr. Art Drotar on just our instruction on a daily basis. But what we're doing is it actually working? Are the students accountable? That's how we know we're going to move to the growth.
Can you go back to the, since we're talking math, go back to the slide with the blue and orange colors?
The growth.
The growth, yeah, thank you. No, keep going, specifically with the, there we go.
Slide four.
There we go, sorry. We just went through this quickly. So do we, from last school year to this one, as it relates to math, did we drop in our math growth?
Right.
Is that accurate?
We did. We saw a bit of a dip in our growth, and again, looking at the data, it's always important to look at the cohorts of students as well. And so there's always a backstory to what the students, that cohort of students brought. And so knowing what we know about those students, making sure that their classroom teachers this year are prepared, not only looking at their formative assessment data on a daily basis, but it also is important to look at the CMAS data and really using our tools such as Alpine to dig deep into which strand is their strength, which strand is the area of challenge for them, and then just prioritizing as far as whole group lessons are concerned and guided reading groups are concerned, because yes, we did take a dip.
When you, when you meet with the teachers to discuss this, is it one-on-one, is it collectively as a, a group, all of the above?
That would be during PLCs, so that's a group. So that's a group where myself or Ms. Yulaberry is there, and we just help discuss. It is, it's two, it's twofold, right? So we have to look at the whole group needs, but then again, we have to use our tools such as Alpine where we can dig deeper into what is this student's story, because that affects our instruction. So do we spend our time on an entire geometry unit that might take four to six weeks, or can we, you know, progress them through that unit a little bit quicker? Again, you have to dig deep, it has to be the whole group instruction, but also our biggest bang for our buck is that individual instruction. And so that's a conversation that happens within the team.
When you say you meet in PLCs, can you give that accurate?
Oh yeah, sorry, professional learning communities.
Sorry, I'm living in too many acronyms right now.
No, I know, sorry about that.
Any other questions, comments?
Go ahead, Dino.
A couple. On this same mess of numbers, performance level. I go across here where it says at or above benchmark. In 16, we were 61, 17, we were 31, and 18, we're at 42. Explain to me a little bit about what's happening in that, unless I'm just not reading it properly.
Can you say that one more time? So you're on this continuing the growth.
If you go down one, the far left, right above race ethnicity, it says performance level? Do you need to borrow my glasses?
It's really small on my screen, so hold on just a second.
I think Veronica was...
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. So it says at or above benchmark.
Right.
We went from 61 to 31 to 42.
Right.
What, just kind of tell me what's happening there.
So what that happens, and it's my understanding that it's following the cohort. So students that were at or above, did they perform there again the next year?
Okay. So it's not necessarily the school as a whole, it's one cohort, so that's telling you that that cohort struggled and is starting to come back, but there's remediation work that has to be done there?
Correct.
Okay, okay, because that's the only one that seems kind of an aberration to me based upon the rest of your trend lines.
Right.
Which are, which are, which are very nice, by the way.
Thank you.
Now, in Hodgkins, you house a number of unique special programs, don't you?
Right.
And I think one of the things that's important, and Dr. Granham, you may need to chime in on this, all your students are counted the same still in Hodgkins towards some of these numbers irrespective of whether or not they're in some of those very specialized programs?
Right, so there are some guidelines on who can take CMAS compared to who can take the DLM. And so we actually have quite a few students who take...
Explain the DLM to the board.
The DLM. I've actually never given it myself.
It's an alternative assessment for students that cannot access the CMAS level of assessment. It's specially designed for students with cognitive needs.
And so, for example, that might be a more oral presentation, and I know that we've used visuals before, we've used actual objects. So there's a list of objects that they say you might need, a basketball, you might need a bat, you might need, so we have to find all of these objects for the assessment to be given.
To answer the question about participation, they do participate in the assessment that's appropriate for them, and they do count.
So you'll see that, it actually was surprising, is that we have some students, in some categories, we don't have a large enough N-count to be given a score on CMAS for our students with disabilities.
Right. So, and my point in going there is because we house that special program in your school, Hodgkins is always going to have an artificial struggle in terms of where the numbers are going to go, because those program numbers do ultimately wind up going in to your school totals. It's part of our whole problem with the state and their assessment. They're not disaggregated out as if it was a separate school.
I believe they're coded back to their school, but I will check that with Ginny Gado, who's not with us tonight.
Because I think we've had this issue arise before, even when your predecessor was there, there's always going to be an additional hurdle because of how the state offers the tests. And I mean, no, there's, there are cohorts of students that, because they have different challenges in life, are never going to be able to test at what a couple of the state board members think is appropriate at any point in their life, no matter how much instruction they have. So that's, that's my point there, is that I believe that these students should be wholly disaggregated and treated to see, to make sure that they're making appropriate gains for their cognitive abilities. And I don't think they should have any reflection on the rest of it.
Andal does a nice job of disaggregating that data, and compared to the state, they are outperforming what we see at the state level.
Oh, there's no, there's no question about that, there's no question about that. We have the best programs in the state. That sounded very Trumpian, didn't it? But we do. But I guess my point is ultimately that because we do house those programs in your school, if you took all of that out, your scores might typically look a little bit stronger than they already are. It's just part of the flawed formula of the state.
Right, and I appreciate you saying that, because I just want people to come on a daily basis and see the growth that our kids in some of those programs have made, and sometimes it cannot be measured on a test, sometimes it's just their life skills. And these are things that these kids are going to need to be able to survive for the rest of their lives, and that's really powerful. And anyone who comes to Hodgkins would, they would see it in the hallways, they would see it in the classrooms, so I do appreciate you making that comment.
Yes, and I have witnessed it, and you have a fantastic team.
Yeah.
And a special shout out to my food taster, partner in crime. It's not often when you go to a school that you always see the principal, if he or she has a spouse or a partner, partner there with, with. So I appreciate that he makes it a team effort with you.
Give him a raise.
Any other questions?
I've got a quick question just about the neighborhood and the makeup of the school, and what are you seeing, and are there any trends? And talk a little bit about, about your numbers and...
Right, so enrollment is down. So we are seeing about 30 less students this year than we did at this time last year, and definitely troubling to me, but when we've talked to the families, where are you going, why are you leaving us? First of all, they never want to leave. No one ever wants to leave Hodgkins. Once you're there, you always want to stay there. But honestly, it's because they can't afford the rent. They can't afford the rent in the neighborhood anymore, and for a lot of our families, they don't have the jobs, and so they're having to leave not just the city, in most cases, it's usually the state.
Yeah, I see that your Hispanic population has dropped dramatically, I mean, 58 kids.
Yeah, so our demographics are starting to change. We've seen that just walking in the halls, which, you know, good news, bad news. We love our Hispanic population, and we still have a strong backing there, but then we also are starting to see a lot of different ethnicities, which is really kind of beautiful. We have lots of different things going on in the building now.
Yeah, I see the, the white population increased about 25, and the Asian population increased about 7.
It has.
It's interesting to see, it'll be interesting to learn a little bit more about that, where they're coming from and, and where, where our kids are leaving too. And obviously, you see, say, the state, leaving the state completely, and that's too bad.
And we have a huge number of our families that actually choice into Hodgkins, so we have parents who are driving from Commerce City every day to bring their students to Hodgkins.
How about from Denver? What do you see coming up from, say, beyond 50th?
You know, honestly, I see more east than I do Denver right now.
That's all.
Any other comments?
We'll end with just one thing. Can you briefly talk about the student employment opportunities that Hodgkins provides?
The student employment opportunities?
That's how I'm going to phrase it, I don't know how you call it.
They're leadership roles.
It's the coolest thing.
They're leadership roles, so that's a big deal at Hodgkins. We believe that every student has genius, and so what that means is everyone has a strength that we can build off of. So if you are, you know, a really friendly student and not shy to shake hands and chum it up with adults, then you're probably best for a greeter leader. If you're somebody who likes to help out and enjoys books and enjoys helping other students choose books, you might be a library assistant. So all of our students have to fill out an application to apply for their job. In some cases, they actually interview for their job. Also, once you have your job, you can be suspended from your job, and you also can be fired from your job. So you need to make the choices and do the right thing, even when no one is watching.
That's awesome.
I'm hiring you for my HR needs.
Thank you for your report.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to the next report.
Now we will hear from Principal Camille Carlson. This is Principal Carlson's fifth year as principal in Westminster Public Schools. The last four years she spent at Fairview Elementary School, and at last week's board meeting, we heard how Fairview Elementary School became a green school under her leadership. This is her first year as principal at Scott Carpenter Middle School, and it is now fair to say that she has garnered experience at all three levels of the K-12 continuum. Principal Carlson, please come forward and share Scott Carpenter's story.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. I'm here this evening to discuss the next steps for Scott Carpenter Middle School. As you know, this is my first year, as Dr. Granham pointed out, and my first time in middle school. And let me say, so far, it is everything I imagined it would be. For example, this cat looks how I feel after 43 days with middle schoolers. No joke, but who's, who's counting? I knew coming into Scott Carpenter Middle School, I would be consciously incompetent. The beginning of the year has been a time of transition. At Scott, there are 12 new staff members, including myself and our assistant principal, who is here this evening, Ms. Moiden. The administrative team is working to support new teachers and leverage our veteran staff as mentors to share their vast amount of knowledge. We are all aware of some of the challenges that Scott Carpenter faced last year, and I commend previous leaders and staff. Mr. Anderson for helping build the foundation for student success. Mr. Aznacar for taking the helm in a time of need, and all the staff here this evening for being strong and working together to continue to support the Scott Carpenter community. To paint a picture of where Scott Carpenter has been, I have included Dr. Granham's famous graphic. As you can see, in 2010, Scott Carpenter earned a performance rating of turnaround. And like we see in so many of our schools today, it has been a slow and steady climb upward with a couple, a couple of bumps along the way. Given the low and declining scores received for five years in a row, Scott Carpenter was awarded the Tiered Intervention Grant, or TIG. This was in 2013 and through the Colorado Department of Education. According to the Colorado Department of Education, the Tiered Intervention Grant is designed to support districts with chronically low-performing schools in the lowest 5% of achievement, as indicated by state assessments. With roughly $800,000 in TIG funds over a three-year period, there came several resources. Some of the resources, such as Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures and TCI History Alive, have been successful enough at Scott Carpenter that the district has also elected to adopt these resources. TIG funds for Scott Carpenter ended with the 2017-2018 fiscal year, so we are grateful that the district has moved to support some of the initiatives Scott Carpenter has put in place to support student success. With the additional resources to support instruction and best practices, Scott Carpenter is officially a performance school. And with a 55.9 points earned on the framework, I am back to being the number one Carlson. And I hope you're watching, honey. So this slide shows school performance framework ratings of schools within a five-mile radius of Scott Carpenter. These are schools outside of our district that border our attendance area. So as you can see, there's only one other school with a rating of performance, and I'll give you a moment just to review the slide. While there's much to celebrate as a team, we know there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. As you can see in this graphic on the slide, in 2016 and 17, academic growth was the same. Achievement went up in 2017 by almost three points, but we remained in improvement. In 2018, academic achievement dropped by half a point, but growth jumped by almost six points, moving Scott Carpenter into the performance category. As a team, we began digging into the data and found that growth is what pushed Scott Carpenter Middle School to the performance category. In order to maintain our performance rating, the focus must be on achievement. With an increased focus on achievement, our first goal is to refine our assessments and instruction. We will do this by focusing on deepening lessons through the new art and science of teaching, elements numbers nine, 10, and 11, which are structured practice sessions, examining similarities and differences, and examining errors and reasoning respectively. Our focus on the new art and science of teaching will support our work to develop common assessments and to drive our data cycles, as well as to refine our systems for ensuring level promotions occurring throughout the year. To keep ourselves accountable to our first goal, teachers submit a snapshot for every period of instruction. The snapshot pulls from the district's proficiency scales, but to up the rigor and engagement, teachers will include the Kagan structures they are going to use and what the advancement via individual determination, or AVID, focus will be. Additionally, teachers will determine what type of assessments will be necessary to monitor growth and mastery of targets. This document is submitted for feedback and posted on teachers' doors every week. We cannot have an intense focus on instruction and achievement without, without building a culture that supports it. In our first two months, we have put in place systems and processes and procedures to support academic achievement. Additionally, we have created a walkthrough tool that changes based on our building focus. And as an administrative team, we schedule one-hour monthly meetings with each teacher to discuss what's hot and what's not. This helps us keep a pulse on the building and allows teachers to have one hour of one-on-one time with an administrator that is non-evaluative. And finally, we are going to focus on expectations and practices throughout the building. In our initial data dig, the staff decided that an increased focus on rigor and student application of skills will support Scott Carpenter's continued performance rating. To stay true to our competency-based system, Scott Carpenter Middle School teachers will stretch their thinking and begin doing what elementary teachers do so well, which is small group targeted instruction. For the 2018-2019 school year, we are committed, committed to an English Language Arts scale score of 728.5, and a median growth percentile of 55. And in math, we are committed to a mean scale score of 716.5 and a growth percentile of 55. With a renewed focus on our competency-based system, I expect to see great things come out of Scott Carpenter over the next five years. And thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Board, questions, comments? Concerns for Mr. Carlson? Go ahead, Kenny.
I, I just, I think we're, we were all aware of, of some of the issues that took place there at Scott Carpenter last year, and I think we were, as a board, thrilled that you were hired to be the principal, and we look forward to your leadership over the next number of years.
Thank you, I appreciate it, as was I.
You're the fifth, I was doing some math in my head, you're the fifth principal at Scott Carpenter in my tenure on this board. Maybe more turnover there than the rest of our schools, and that's not to take away from anybody's skill sets as a principal, but knowing that there's been a lot of turnover there, what are you doing to try to, try to keep the leadership stabilized to ensure parents that, you know, just because Junior started out in the first grade with Principal X, and by the time he's to the fifth grade, he's to X plus four, what are, you know, to assure them that Scott Carpenter is solid?
So I think the first thing, just coming in as a new administrative team, we did a lot of observing just practices and procedures and systems that were in place, which is so important to run an efficient building. And I think kind of what we discovered is that because there have been changes in leadership and so many things that have happened, there weren't those solid systems. And I know that I can't operate in a state of chaos. And so I think what we initially started to do was to put in place those processes and procedures and systems that teachers and students can count on, because I think that we work with a population of students that depend on us to be consistent. So I think for us right now, that's the start, and what we're really focusing on for the beginning of this year in the first semester, is just making sure that everyone knows how our building's going to operate on a day-to-day basis.
And knowing that there's been that much turnover, what about some of your teachers who've been through it all and some of your staff? How are they, how are they, you know, dealing with things? Are they being supportive to you and the rest of the team? Or are they like, oh, great, here we go, yet another one, only 10 years to retirement, I'll probably get three more?
I would say I probably have a camp in each area. I do feel that some of the teachers are feeling a little bit wounded, given what they've experienced over the years. So I think some, as you see many times when you establish your leadership role, some will stay and some will go, which I also experienced at Fairview. I think those that stay are on board for the right reasons and for competency-based education and for the students we serve. I think that those that, that are not in support of the direction that the building are going, is going, I wish them luck.
That's a great answer. And then finally, Dr. Granham may want to... That's a great answer. And then finally, Dr. Grenham may want to weigh in on this. I saw in your slide with your commitment card there, maybe we can pull it back up. Science. When, give us a little update on the, the whole science thing.
Science is one of the content areas that's tested on the CMAS, but it's only the achievement that's tested. And at the middle school level, it's only the eighth grader, traditional eighth graders that are tested. You'll not see any growth measure there because fifth grade gets tested, eighth grade gets tested, and 11th grade gets tested at the high school. But tested, but not to the same extent as math.
Okay. Does it get weight in the-
It does count in the school performance framework, so that's definitely why it's part of their goals.
However, I will say that we're still working in that direction. I think math and science are going to come along together, which would make sense. But the reason I don't mention it is because 525 would not be a score that would get us additional points. That makes sense.
Okay. And do the project lead the way classrooms that we built a number of years back in our middle schools? Do they work well with this latest addition from the state in terms of testing?
If it's an eighth grade student and they're taking a class at the eighth grade, they will be tested with the current science assessment. Now, the state did adopt the Next Generation Science Standards this past summer. If you recall, as a board, you actually adopted them back in 2015. And our CSA, our Colorado STEM Academy was the first school that adopted those and recommended that the district should go that way. And I believe you know what their science scores look like. So, so yes, anything that helps kids explore and investigate their world is going to help with science scores.
Thank you.
You want to introduce who you have here with you tonight?
Yes.
And I see Kada over here, too.
Kada Willie is here. She could answer probably your science questions.
Right.
And then Dr. Adcock and Molly Moiden, and then former assistant principal Laura Ulliver.
So you said you have 12 new staff members? Is that correct?
That's correct.
How many are licensed teachers? Is that all the 12 you're referring to? Just want to make sure.
Yes.
So how many are rookies, meaning this is their first year ever teaching, you know?
I believe, trying to think off the top of my head, half, if I'm including myself and Molly. Yeah, half.
Do you, what are you doing to ensure that they're getting the resources that they need? I would assume middle school is a little bit more of a, like the hairy cat that you just showed, a little bit more of a different beast than elementary?
I would say with, first, I would say the robust mentor program that we have now coming out of the professional development department under Mike Lynch is helping. They're, they keep logs of hours that they meet and observe their mentees. So that's part of it. And I think our implementation of our what's hot, what's not meetings, it's an opportunity where actually the teacher comes in with anything that they want to discuss. And we will sit and, and talk about whatever they need. So because we meet with them once a week for an hour, it really allows us to, to figure out what's going on and what they need. And then we're utilizing our coach to also move through our new teachers first in coaching cycles to support them.
Do the students still, or still, do they move through cohorts within middle school at Scott, such as like Home Base, and you had the same students in similar classes?
We, kind of. So I, and I didn't, I did not build the master schedule this year. But they, so the sixth graders kind of travel together for the most part, and then seventh and eighth are mixed in. But then we also have academic enrichment in the morning. And so that's kind of their homeroom. And that's where they move through, like their data notebook, competency tracker, goal setting.
Okay. Excellent. All right. No other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Good job. All right, moving on to item, where am I at? Item 8.1 Personnel Matters with Mr. Kirk Lade.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve Personnel Matters.
Let's receive it first. But I like your urgency. This is nice. Kirk, sit back down. We're done.
Oh, we're forgetting, forget it.
He, he waited this whole moment for this opportunity.
I know. He's, he was moving fast. You guys didn't see him. He was already up there.
This is my moment. You're going to shine.
Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Swanson, I've prepared for you a Personnel Report containing items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Max?
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the Personnel Matters as presented by the fast person Kirk Lade, and items 1.0, 3.0, and 5.0.
Fantastic. We've got a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All right. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantro.
Yes.
Mr. Davidak.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valente.
Aye.
Fantastic. Item 8.2 Resolution Regarding CRS 22-11-202, Dr. Pamela Swanson.
I think my report pretty much summed up the importance of this. And I've asked Steve to be our whereas guy and read it for your consideration.
Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Swanson, this is a lengthy resolution because Holly and her team wanted to cover every single base, and they did it. So, so bear with me. But as Dr. Swanson said, this is important. Whereas the Board of Education of Westminster Public Schools is dedicated to providing an effective, equitable, and rigorous education to all students. And whereas Colorado revised statute defines an effective accountability system as one that reports information concerning performance that is perceived by educators as fair, balanced, cumulative, credible, and useful. And whereas Colorado revised statutes requires the Colorado State Board of Education to review the performance of public education systems annually and set, quote, "appropriate, ambitious, but attainable targets for measures used to determine the levels, levels of school and school district performance." And whereas Colorado revised statute provides that the state shall consider information provided to it by local school boards. And whereas the board seeks to provide information to the State Board of Education and to be involved in the development of an accountability system that provides, quote, "appropriate, ambitious, but attainable targets to measure school and school district performance." And whereas the board believes the annual snapshot of academic achievement is an incomplete measure of school or school district performances because many students start school below grade level and without significant academic growth, achievement gaps will persist, persist. And whereas the board believes that academic growth is a critical measure of the value added to student learning by schools and school districts that should continue to comprise the statewide measures used to determine the levels of school and school district performance. And whereas the board believes that rushing changes to school and school district performance targets and the statewide accountability system will have unintended negative consequences because the revisions have not been thoroughly vetted by stakeholders and educational professionals such as school district administrators, teachers, teachers' unions, the Accountability Work Group, the Technical Advisory Panel, and parents. And whereas the board believes it is imperative to obtain authentic input from these stakeholders and educational professionals prior to any and all revisions to the accountability system or targets being adopted. And whereas the board believes that making piecemeal changes without adequate study to an already flawed accountability system will exacerbate existing inequities that impact students across the state. And whereas the board believes that continual changes to the accountability system creates a lack of consistency in accountability measures and targets and causes a loss of credibility in the system results for community members and a loss of defensibility of Colorado's accountability model in measuring effective schools. And whereas the board believes the Colorado Department of Education's use of the phrase, quote, "desired distribution of schools" to ensure that a percentage of schools and/or school districts are rated as turnaround or priority improvement is in conflict with and undermines the statutory requirement that the goals be, quote, "attainable" and is a troubling and potentially illegal premise for measuring the effectiveness of schools and school districts virtually guaranteeing that some will continually be labeled as failures and never attain an acceptable performance rating. And whereas the board believes that the changes proposed, proposed by the Colorado Department of Education ensure that school districts and schools serving the state's most vulnerable students will fail in moving off the watch list and be subjected to coercive action inconsistent with the Colorado Constitution's guarantee of local control over instruction. Now therefore be it resolved that the board, one, reaffirms its commitment to provide an effective, rigorous, and equitable education to all students; two, seeks to provide information regarding the accountability system and the development of performance indicators to the State Board of Education for its consideration; and three, seeks to be instrumental in identifying and developing a fair, equitable, and rigorous accountability system designed to ensure that Colorado students grow and achieve educational success dated and signed by the Directors of Westminster Public Schools this date.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Directors of Westminster Public Schools and Advanced Ed Accredited Institution adopt Resolution 2018-10-16, which reaffirms the commitment of Westminster Public Schools and Advanced Ed Accredited Institution and the Board of Education to provide an effective, rigorous, and equitable education for all students, seeks to be instrumental in identifying and developing a fair, equitable, and rigorous accountability system designed to ensure that Colorado students grow and achieve educational success.
We have a motion?
Second.
Thoughts, comments?
I do want to say one thing. Over the last few years, and getting to this point with this resolution that we are presenting as the four other board members sitting here, including myself as the fifth one, I really appreciate the thoughtful, meaningful conversations that we've had around this. And I appreciate the leadership and, you know, always fighting that good fight. But for the board members here who get paid quite substantially for sitting here, which we're not here for anything, but for the students, at the end of the day, I think it's important to recognize that we've been extremely thoughtful and considerate in our efforts moving forward. So thank you, and I appreciate serving with each of you. So Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantro.
Yes.
Mr. Davidak.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valente.
Aye.
Let's sign it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Resolution passes. Moving on to meeting notification. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Westminster, Westminster Public Schools and Advanced Ed Accredited, Accredited Organization will be Tuesday, November 13th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. The regular meeting will be held in the lecture hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted in the window of the main entrance of Westminster High School and on board docs 24 hours before each business meeting. Veronica, guess what? The time is now 7:34, and we are adjourned.